I'd like to call this meeting of the Southwest Licking Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, May the 16th, at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room. I'd like to recognize all of our visitors here tonight and online. If you will please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and continue standing for the National Anthem and the alma mater. Our choir is going to lead us in all of those.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys can sit down. Just get it.
The flag and God is waving high above resounding cheers. Our voices ring with songs of praise that took the passing years. Free the echoes ever roll through all the warriors' graves. Our hands of friendship lifted high will reach through time and place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Ziney?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Ziney?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. I have some retirement presentations this evening. I would like to welcome up Ms. Barb Lengel and also our athletic director, Jake Perkins, to talk about her.
That's not making it easier for me. Yeah, it's a...I know I've been in denial for a few years now, but it's all becoming quite real these last few weeks. With...Barb's been a staple here for so many years. And, you know, when I came here four years ago as an AD position in another district, one of the reasons that I was interested in coming here is because I knew about, you know, about Barb and the job she did. Everyone does. Everyone in our business, ADs across. In fact, I was just at our baseball tournament game, which, thank you for letting me go first. I do...when I leave after this, I'm not being rude. We have a home tournament game going on, so...but the AD from the other school, and I told him, "I'm going over to the board meeting. Our secretary is retiring." He said, "Oh, Barb Lengel?" He said, "Oh, that's a big loss." I said, "Yeah, yeah, thanks for reminding me." But really, it's impossible. It can be impossible to fill those shoes. I'm so happy for her. The legacy she leaves is unbelievable. They...I mean, they do not make people in these positions like this anymore. It's just, you won't see this again, not just here, but anywhere. I mean, 31 years in that position, in any position in the schools, but what she has done, I mean, she has been Watkins Warrior Athletics. And I hope we can continue on, you know, and not drop the ball too much as she leaves us. But again, just so happy for her. Everyone you talk to, and not outside, but even in our district, just talks about, you know, Barb leaving, that's such a big deal. Like, I know all of our retirement speeches are very...it's important, but like, the legacy she leaves is just really, really next level. So I just want to thank her for the time. The only regret I have is that I only had four years to work with her, but I really am happy for her, and she gets to spend more time with her family because she absolutely deserves it. She's been great, great for me, and I know I have a lifelong friend, and we all do in our community. So, thank you, Barb. Congratulations. She really is a legend. Congratulations.
Don't we get to vote on this?
We already did. Congratulations.
Kind of nominated myself to be next because Tracy also has someplace to be after this. They're going to some concert or some fancy place, I don't even know. Come on up, Tracy. So she just loves being...both the people that I'm going to talk about just love being the center of attention so much, so this is kind of great. So before we...before I get started with what I was going to read with Tracy, I think that she has more books than what most libraries have. And it's kind of impressive, but her generosity also. She has opened up her classroom the past few weeks to, I mean, her own colleagues in the building, but then new teachers within the district and new teachers that are coming into our building next year to sort through her things and anything that they feel like that they can use. She's graciously giving it to them. And one of the coolest things that she has done, and kids are so excited, is that she's letting them pick books, like four, five, six books each, and then Ziploc bag. And they...it's like a, like, I don't know, like a crazy thrift store find, but the kids are so excited because they're like, "I get to read them," and they get to keep them. So it's not just that they are getting to read these books and borrowing them, they're super excited that they get to keep them. Because that was the first thing, like, "Do we have to give these back?" No, they're getting to keep them, and they're very excited about that. So that being said, Tracy's journey in Southwest Licking Schools is a testament to her unwavering dedication from her early days at Aetna Elementary to her graduation from Watkins. She has come full circle, now teaching third to sixth grades at Aetna, Petascola, and Watkins Middle School. Her commitment is truly remarkable, as she has spent close to 9,000 days within the Southwest Licking Walls impacting the lives of 1,500 students, over 1,500 students, in her 35 years of teaching career. Tracy has devoted herself to students and colleagues and continues the Warrior tradition with her husband, Steve, while raising their voice in our district. Tracy has also spent many years as a cheerleader and cheer coach on the sidelines, but once you hear her giggle, which is...it's a pretty amazing giggle, and see the smile, see her smile, you are not surprised by the energy she still brings each day in the classroom and in the building. You also aren't shocked when you see the meticulous detail, the decorations in her classroom. It's pretty amazing. Her organized binders are beyond compare, not to mention her ability to create bulletin boards, Google slides, Write to Read Week themes, and Big Bubble Letters, just to name a few things. I can honestly say that this year's Write to Read Week theme Saddle Up and Read was quite an extravaganza, and she is one of the ones that helped lead it, and I have zero doubt that we will never have another one that tops it. And if you doubt me, check out our Facebook page. It is...I mean, there were hay bales even. It was crazy. She helps keep everyone on track and is always encourages both students and staff. Tracy is willing to jump on board and try to do whatever as he did in What's Best for Kids. Tracy, affectionately known as Mama Hair, has been a source of love and support for all in her care. We are deeply grateful for her nurturing presence and positive impact she has had on the school community. We will miss her dearly, but we hope she enjoys every single second of her retirement, especially before Steve joins you, so he can have some... He's trying to make me try to change that. So, thank you, Tracy.
Tracy, do your friends want to come up and get in the picture? Like Dee Dee and...do Dee Dee and Jen want to come and get the picture with you?
Sure they do.
That'd be fun. Come on. They came here to support you. Call them up, Tracy. Yeah, whoever you want. Anybody, your family, friends, whoever you want.
We're going to be all about you. Because you're our family. Yes, Jen, Dee Dee, come on. You're my family too.
Barb, do you want a redo? Does Barb want a redo?
Whenever I'm with the shortest thing, so I like the short one.
I think I can be back here and not be in the picture.
The one that's in charge, so that's great. And her cake said, "School's out forever," by the way. It's actually her cake and Sandy's cake, but Sandy had another commitment, so she couldn't be at our staff meeting when we did the cake. So, speaking of which, next up is Sandy Kraus. And I'll say that, like, both of these ladies, like, so their whole career and how much time they've spent here, it's like, says a whole lot about this district. So this is Sandy. Sandy has been in Southwest Licking Schools for 29 years. She worked in food service as a one-on-one educational support aide for four different students, and for the past 16 years as a reading support paraprofessional. But one common thread that has remained is her dedication and support to hundreds of students within Southwest Licking. This is from Amy Dennison, so our PLSs and Amy couldn't be here this evening. So Amy wanted me to say on her behalf is that Sandy and I first worked together over 20 years ago when she was an aide to a student in my classroom. Sandy worked well not only with her assigned student, but also with any student who may have needed help or some assistance. Sandy wanted nothing more than success for the students in the classroom. Fast forward a decade or two, and Sandy became a title paraprofessional. Sandy and I have worked together for the last 11 years. Sandy took her job helping our needyest students, kindergarten and first graders, to heart. She helped them to learn the foundational skills that are necessary for becoming secure readers. So everyone at Aetna agrees, and we want you to know that Sandy's love and support for her students is palpable, and it is reflected in the joy on their faces every day. Her constant smile and genuine care for her students are a testament to her selflessness and dedication. We are thankful for Mrs. Kraus, or Mrs. Crouch, as some of the students call her, in the selfless service she has provided to our students in our district. Sandy, your Aetna family and the rest of the district want you to know how much you are truly appreciated. I leave you with three things that you can always count on her saying, like, consistently. One is, "You got that right, no matter what you say." It's funny. And the other is, "That's fine, I'll do whatever you need." And she truly does do whatever you need, and is always...never complains about it. And the last one is, she's like, "Oh, wow, that's life." No matter what happens, just rolls off her back, and she says, "Oh, well, that's life." So Sandy, we hope that you enjoy your new life. Thank you. And she doesn't always wear the same outfit. I just took the picture this time.
Oh, he's coming. There you go.
How about Kyle Domer and whoever is speaking, Mrs. Parker?
Admittedly, I'm just hoping I get through this without crying, so we'll start with it. Kyle Domer has meant so many things to so many people at Southwest Licking. He has acted as a coach and a mentor to a number of students throughout the years, many of which he stays in close contact with, and I can remember stats from the 1990s that they had put up. He has acted as a counselor and a listening ear to more students than I could ever imagine. His role as a physical education teacher has allowed for students to work outside of their comfort zone in more ways than a class kid could. He has pushed students to become better, harder workers, and kids that enjoy movement. He doesn't know a stranger and is truly a celebrity in Petascola. I have watched many students flock to his desk to share pieces of information about their moms, their dads, their aunts, their uncles, all of which he's had over the years. He listens with intent and patience, and he is genuinely interested in kids, and they know that. That's probably the thing I'm going to miss the most about him. He helped to create and adopt a physical education program that has helped to meet the needs of all students regardless of their ability level. He has worked with peer collaborators to create a meaningful and a fun environment. I honestly can't imagine replacing his presence at Watkins. I'm sorry. I am honored to speak on behalf of Kyle Domer and his dedication to Southwest Licking Schools. As most of you are aware, Mr. Domer is a remarkable individual who has dedicated 31 years of his life shaping minds and bodies of countless students at Watkins Middle School. His retirement marks the end of an era, but also signals the beginning of a new chapter. Throughout his time as a physical education teacher, he exemplified the qualities of grit through every aspect of his work, from early mornings spent, frankly, with me, preparing lesson plans, to late evenings coaching sports. His passion and perseverance has never, ever been in question. He has approached every day with true determination, and he strives to make an impact on every student he's ever had contact with. But his grit extends far beyond the walls of the gym. He was here during the amazing growth of our district, and he remains steadfast in the commitment to the education and fostering love of physical activity. He embraced challenges as opportunity for growth and never allowed setbacks in technology to deter him from his mission. As we transitioned, as he transitions, not we, we...not transition. Into retirement, his legacy of grit serves as inspiration to us all. No matter what obstacle we may face, or I may face without him, with determination and perseverance, I know that anything is possible, and he has helped to teach me that as a teacher. He has been a true testament to dedication. I hope that your retirement is filled with joy, fulfillment, and countless new adventures. Your friendship has meant the world to me, and I'm proud to have worked alongside you for 10 years. Congratulations.
Now we'd like to recognize Judy Jacobson.
So Judy and I go way back to August of 2023. The only way that Judy would let me convince her to even come tonight and be recognized is if I gave the speech and I kept it short. She's uncomfortable in this type of thing, but nonetheless, she deserves to be recognized. When I asked Judy, "How long have you been in the district?", just like that, she said, "February 2nd, 1998." And I said, "How do you know that date?" And she's like, "I'll never forget my first day in this district." In that time, she has taught eighth grade English, seventh grade health, fifth grade math, fifth grade social studies. She's been a tutor, and most recently, the high school librarian. Evidently, science just wasn't her thing. Judy is always kind, she's soft-spoken, but she's always willing to do anything for our students and our staff. Judy, we're certainly going to miss you.
All right, now we'd like to recognize Paula Dillon.
Paula has been with the district for 20 years, 20-plus years, I think, at the high school as a paraprofessional. Today, I asked a couple of kids to describe Paula in one word. I cut out some things. They said that she is full of wisdom, very caring, has many experiences, kind, outgoing, and hopeful. And I would have to agree with every single one of those. Paula is a wonderful mother, wife, and friend to many. Not only is she a great and amazing mother to her own children at home, but she has played the role of a mother to many students over the years. She is very caring and puts her whole heart into her students and her job. Whether it is taking walks with a student that is overwhelmed, reading tests, or getting the endless number of Band-Aids or tissues, she has been a huge part of their lives. She goes above and beyond her duties and fills her day with true diligence and integrity. Paula has been a huge part of helping my classroom run smoothly. She has been the voice helping keep not only my students in check, but me also. And I don't know how I'm going to make it without her. I truly consider her a friend, and it will be very hard to do this without her, but I am very excited for her adventures to come. There are so many wonderful memories and stories I hope she can share, laugh, and hold dear to her heart. And I would like to thank her for all that she has done for me and all of our students. Southwest Licking has been very lucky to have you all of these years.
All right. How about a presentation from Garmin Miller?
Very tough act. Just congratulate all those retirees. What a...this year, the years, and what a great impact to this community and district. What I'm going to cover tonight relates to the baseball, softball, tennis complex. When that was designed and built, working through with the building department, we knew that they were going to require restroom facilities just because of the distance away from the high school. And they gave us a variance to allow a couple of years, I believe we had a two-year window to get the restrooms addressed. So we've been working with Licking County on what that looks like. So they're going to require the...
You're clearing the room, Eric. I don't know what's happening here.
I'm sorry, I should have stopped, Eric. I should have said it. If you're not needing to be here for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome.
You're kidding. You're losing them.
Eric's going to talk about bathrooms.
It's going to be really exciting. I mean, I like bathrooms.
It has to accommodate 600 people. So that's all spectators at all fields, including the participants. So within the packet that you have, you can see what that would look like. It's basically eight fixtures for the women, four fixtures for the men.
Do you guys see it on your thing?
It's further down. If you go down to the business items, the present...or his proposal is actually done in that part, not with...
Can we put it up there so other people can see too, Rick? Or is that...can you put it up? Hi, Jeff. Man, you ran Jeff right out of here. What's happening? It's supposed to be working. Okay, Brittany will work on it.
Do you see Brittany's "I" under business items?
Thank you, Brittany.
Next to the last page.
Yeah, keep going. Then, next to the last one.
Right there, third slide.
Third slide there. There we go.
So as far as location, we've been working with Jake and the boosters and Dr. Perkins on...we looked at different options of where it could be located, and there was a desire to expand that parking. So what you're seeing is not only the restroom building that is at the far bottom, the southeast corner there, but then also increasing your parking for the facility as part of the project. And then the next page shows you a little more zoomed in look at what that restroom building would look like. So with that, we also included a budget for you. You know, you would think for a small building, it is a costly building because of all the water, sanitary, and getting all of that there, and then also all the site works that we'll have to do, we'll have to account for that detention basin and do some additional site work there. So the total budget with construction and all the other soft cost, plan approval, is $718,000 for this facility.
Would this be heated in the winter time?
We can heat it, yes.
But we're not planning on?
I...we haven't gotten into that kind of detail. It would be a very small heater, so I guess we'll work with the district and the maintenance people. It wouldn't be difficult to heat it.
Honestly, we probably won't use it much in the winter, just with the, you know...
Yeah, probably. Just worry about freezing.
Yeah, I mean, enough to do that, but not like... That's what I was thinking. Enough so the pipes don't freeze.
Yeah, we could keep minimal heat through the winter. As far as the timeline, just, I think, you know, going through, we'll have to go through the TRC process and get approvals through Licking County, so that will take a little bit of time. You know, we would move as fast as we could, ideally getting it out to bid by the fall and trying to hit the beginning of the season, but it might...just want you to be prepared, it might bleed a little bit into the summer. You know, it's just hard to tell until we get all the approvals. So are there any questions?
Water and sewer is problematic out here. Is that...I mean, does that factor into that? Are we going to run into, like, licking...what is it, Southwest Licking water and sewer? Letting us do this?
Yeah, we've coordinated all that, and it's actually, we can come off along Route 40, the utilities are there that we can tap off of.
How many additional parking spots are there? If...is the map to scale? I could just count.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two additional spots?
I think that sounds right, Eric. I think that's-
Actually, I think the additional are 56.
Plus, 72 total.
That's why it'd be 56, because the only existing are the ones right along the tennis court right now.
So 72 is the total after that.
Any augmentation to the dugout be a part of this, or is that something else?
So when, in talking with, when Mr. Perkins had talked to the boosters and then talking to Eric, I think we're going to add some sort of a window type, I don't know if you can better explain it, but to help make that so they could actually utilize it for concessions. The, the issue becomes, and putting, one of the proposals by Garmin and Miller was to put this behind, you know, the backstop, but when you do that, the restroom facilities are too far away from tennis and softball. So this, and then, you know, people aren't going to want to work baseball concessions if they can't see the game.
Correct.
So this will be a happy medium, you know, the restrooms will be centrally located for all the facilities out there, and then they will do some adjustments, which the boosters have requested, to make that a little bit more user friendly.
Okay, so there will be, if you're working in that concession area, you will be able to see the game?
Correct, yes.
It's been a big issue this year.
Yeah, it's not really, that's not really that functionable how it is currently.
No.
Yeah, we can, we can cut a hole in there. The biggest thing we'll need to coordinate is the protection, what that looks like with, you know, if there's a plexiglass or if it's more of a fencing material, we can look with the district on how to protect that opening for the people in there.
All right, thank you.
All right, request to speak, Teamsters, Southwest Licking Education Association. Approval of minutes, I need a motion to approve the April 18 minutes, please.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Motion to approve the financial report, report from the charter.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Could on agenda is the executive summary for April 2024. It was a fairly routine month. We did receive our fourth income tax settlement, and it was, the first one is actually positive. So it was about 2% higher than we anticipated, but year-to-date, we were still down 2.6%, but that's pretty close. So overall, expenditures are right where we expected them to be at. So right now, revenue is 2% higher than we expected, and expenditures are 1% lower than we expected. So we are running very well with a couple of months left in the fiscal year, okay?
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Item number six, the personnel consent calendar, we need a motion to approve items B through K.
Motion approval seven B through?
Six.
Oh.
Six, B through K?
Yes, six. B through K.
Okay, can I go ahead?
Yes.
All right, so a couple of things. One thing, just to note again, we're continuing the hiring season. We've gotten some incredible new employees we're super excited about. I don't have the numbers tonight, but definitely a couple more community members who have recently moved here. And in recent interviews, the one lady said, she said, we were looking for houses, we moved to this district. I drove by those beautiful schools and I said, I will work there. I will, I'm going to work there, so, yeah, it was super cool. So anyways, really excited about that. I'm also going to have Dan in a second, before I have him come up and speak for a minute. I want to bring everyone back to Potasko Elementary. As you know, we've been talking for quite some time now what we're going to do with that building. We've explored a variety of options through both the ESCs, the career centers, as well as putting it out there in the public for different ideas to follow through with our commitment to have students in that building in some capacity and to keep that building in the school community. So over time, as those things have evolved, and we haven't really found a perfect solution that we felt comfortable bringing to the board, Dan and I started having conversations, and we kind of came up with a new idea to best serve our students. So I'm going to have him come up and share with you what our plan is.
All right, well, it's an easy plane to talk about because it's pretty exciting, in my opinion. And after I'm done here, I plan on jetting out to try to recruit some of our retiree hires. Doesn't matter, I have a new plan here. So just a little background, we serve over 1,000 students with disabilities in the district. Very proud of teachers, administration, the building, and how we've changed to an inclusion model over the last decade. Our teachers work really hard, our paraprofessional staff works really hard to support every student's needs in their classroom setting. With that being said, we do offer the full continuum of services. So that's with students with disabilities, with their peers 100% of the time, a combination of students who need extra small groups of four part of the day, and one area where the district currently doesn't have any in-house support is for our students with our most complex disabilities. So those students, and when I say that the district doesn't have those supports, the county does not have those supports available. Even the east side of Columbus does not have those supports available. So we have a handful of students who we have to have some very difficult conversations with their families with. And we get to the point where we've exhausted all of our resources to support them in the district. Oftentimes, that's unfortunately leading to a placement on the west side of Columbus. You know, we work with a couple of different support providers, and we're very happy with those providers, but it results in our kids feeling a detachment from the district, long bus rides, financial costs for the district that are increasingly becoming significantly high. And so one of the ideas we had with Potasko was trying to find a way where we could expand our continuum but keep it in our district. Potasko Elementary gives us that opportunity to offer that full continuum from least restrictive to a more restrictive setting for students. With removing the barriers of not being able to participate in extracurricular activities because you're going to school on the west side, removing the barriers of an hour-long transportation or more just to get to that placement, and then bridging that return to school, because we do have many students who are in outside placement, who our goal is to get back to the district and the buildings with their peers, and that distance makes it more difficult as well. So Potasko gives us an opportunity to house those positions within the district. What we'd be looking at is operating a building that can serve both complex disabilities such as autism and then more of your, some of your behaviors that we need to get in check before we move back to a district placement. We'd be looking to make it a more of a flexible model to where students do have the opportunity to return with their peers. You know, maybe it's six months, maybe it's a couple of years, but again, take away one of those barriers for students. And so this opportunity at Potasko is not available in most districts. Most districts, we don't have a building that, that board has deemed can't support a full school anymore, but it can support a program that still keeps kids in the district and is a support for families. So again, the model would be, we would staff it like we would with our teachers, support staff, extra behavioral support, but just duplicate what some of those outside providers do, but do it in our district. So again, we're very excited about the opportunity. It doesn't close down opportunities for the building in the future as well. So right now, we're looking at about a six-classroom model, and anywhere from six to 10 students in that model. And so we're not talking about consuming the whole building. So there's still opportunities for growth in the district and to use the building in a variety of ways. But I feel like this is a really niche area where it affects some of our most complex students that we can fill with this building at this point.
So before he sits down, not to put you on the spot again, Dan, but so with that comes the recommendation tonight of hiring John Rathburn, who is here, as a coordinator of student services. Could you talk for just a moment on kind of what the next year will look like?
Sure. So a, you know, starting a school is a big deal, right? So part of that is redesigning classroom spaces. When we're talking about the level of complexity needs, we're talking about changing the, the, kind of, some of the internal parts of the building for safety, for programming. And then we have a lot of students, as I mentioned, who get an outside support system. We're not going to totally cut off that, you know, if a student's been successful for five years at an outside program, the family's happy there, we're not going to force them back and cause a disruption to their services. So we're also looking at opening the building, the programming to some of the surrounding districts. This is again, as I mentioned earlier, not a Southwest Licking problem with the lack of services and spaces, but it's really a county-wide problem and really a central Ohio problem. So part of our planning will be to reach out to other districts to make sure that the program is made, remains financially feasible and working with other districts to identify needs and how we can support them as well. We'll be visiting a lot of those outside programs as well, doing a lot of observations, collecting information, building a curriculum out. We want the program to be successful, so we don't want the program to come a year and us not be prepared and planned both physically, curriculum-wise, academically, socially, emotionally. So we're, it does require a lot of extensive planning, a lot of support. Recruiting solid grade staff members who, who are really talented in that, and some of those are probably existing in our school. When I, school buildings right now who will, I, I envision some of them will, will want to move to that new building if the board moves forward with it as well. But there's a lot of planning and that goes into this, and again, we want it, number one, we want to make sure it's successful for our kids. And number two, we want to make sure that it's financially feasible for the district to move forward because it's a, it's a commitment, but it's also not a financial, it's, it's the bigger commitment to kids and their families.
Do you guys have any questions for Dan, or just about the process, or John, or?
Go ahead and ask this before. Is the goal to service K through 12, or what are we going to start with?
Sure, so, so from a district standpoint, our biggest need is K through five right now.
Okay.
So where our population has changed, so, and really, we're looking at kind of two parts right now. We're looking more of a complex autism side and then a complex behavior side. Sometimes those cross over. So right now, I can confidently say we'll be serving our K through six, complex autism and K through six, complex behavior. Depending on the need, and as I start to talk to families who are already in outside placements, we'll kind of determine if it will go six through 12, maybe one of those areas or both of those areas. But at this point, we, then that's part of our challenge this year, is determining what population specifically beyond those two that we're going to serve.
Are we looking at providing any other resources, like for hearing impaired or visually impaired students?
Eventually, that, that's still down the road. Now, a lot of those could be served in our actual existing school buildings. The challenge with some of those programmings is the specific teacher. So our population of visually impaired and hard of, hard of hearing deaf population is so small at this point that we could not, it would really be hiring like a teacher for a student, and then another teacher for a student at a different grade level.
Okay.
So eventually, that's, could be part of the collaboration where we open a classroom that serves other districts in that area with some of our own, and that's one thing that's really exciting. It's, you're not going to make a commitment that is, shuts off the rest of the building for future opportunities. We're thinking right now, the first floor is what we would, would use most. There are some beautiful rooms like the art room at Potasko Elementary, but we're also going to be looking through some significant, significant areas where if a portion of the building doesn't need to be, let's say, ready to serve students, we might basically put up a wall, or, or, might not put up a wall, but just control the uses of the building. So we're not, we're not ready to get, to say that we're going to use the full building at this point, if that makes sense. Heating, cooling, we want to control some of those costs. If we're only going to start with six classrooms, we're going to look at, you know, be strategic with what we're doing.
My question is around staffing. So have we talked about the, you will have to have, I'm sure you guys have talked about that, but like food service and custodial and enough teachers, how, like, the budget for that and stuff.
Rick provided a lot of great information that shows the building, the operating costs.
Okay.
Look at, you know, we're spending a, sometimes a six figures on placing a student, the west side of Columbus, not including transportation costs, not including related services costs. So we've planned out financially, and another thing that when Casey and I discussed it was we don't want to shortchange the program either, so it's going to be appropriately staffed, and we've figured all those costs in it, including custodian, including the number of paras, we would, the number of teachers. And the nice thing too with this sort of program is I do see it growing. So on day one, we're not going to have a fully staffed program that doesn't have enough students in it. So we'll continue to add paraprofessionals, teachers, as the program continues to grow.
Okay, and then my other question would be the timeline.
So the, the goal will be for John, if you approve the recommendation tonight, to work with Dan's department next year, and then we would open in the fall of 2025.
Okay.
The same time, the Potasko kids would transition to Potasko South Fork. We would open this building, so one year out, basically.
Sorry, Kath, you also mentioned food. So right now, the plan would be to bring food over from another building.
Okay.
Yep.
So not have a functioning-
Many of our students in that population end up packing their own food as well. So it would be, yeah, not a huge thing, but yeah, that's our current plan.
Okay, cool.
Do you have an enrollment goal?
Yes, so right now, when we talk about, if we came, if we were able to open with six full classrooms, we'd be looking at a minimum of 36 students with a maximum of about 48 students. Yep, at full capacity. So I'm not dead set on making sure we hit that 36 to start. I don't want to also put the district in a position where, hey, we've got 20 seats filled internally, so we're filling 16 immediately with outside placements from other districts, because we want to have some room for our growth so we can give our families that, that first option to-
Do you have an estimate of how many we send out externally now?
Well, when you combine the, our behavioral support schools, our complex disability schools, and then you combine some of the ones you mentioned, hard of hearing, approximately 30, anytime, anywhere between 30 and 40.
Okay.
But I heard you say earlier that we would not force families if their child is in a, a good space that's working for that student, they would not have to come back here. They could stay where they are because, okay.
We're going to try to convince them and how great it is, and you know. But exactly, you know, the number one thing is the, the quality of education and the lack of disruption to some students' programming. There'll be a few families right off the bat who are going to be thrilled and can't wait for it to open. And also, I want to make sure that it's clear that we're not, the goal of the school is not to bring additional kids outside of our existing schools. So we're looking for, that, the programming in our schools is really great. As I mentioned at the start here, our teachers, our administration, our support staff have really grown leaps and bounds and do an excellent job, you know, with a 99% of students. And so the students we're talking about, it's really difficult conversations where we've pulled out all of our tools in our, our toolbox here, and, you know, we can't get the job done in the existing setting. So, so really, it's going to be for families who are either already out or, you know, ones in the future, again, very few percentage of them who need that extra support.
I know that I shared with, I think, Dr. Perkins, that we've talked about this too. This is a huge need across the state. And I think when we do it right, people are going to want to come and look and figure out how to model their own district after it.
Yep, yep, exactly, yeah. We, I, I don't think we'll have a trouble filling spots.
I don't think you will either. I think you're going to want maybe some parameters of, of your upward limit.
Yep, and that's why we want to make sure that we, we are prioritizing the district too. And so my guess is we won't start full because we're going to want to save some, some spots. Even if we get, hey, we could, even could fill them all with other districts. Again, the priority needs to be Southwest Licking students, keeping them in district, keeping those opportunities open.
I mean, one more thing, I promise I'll be done after this. So you said just the first floor for now, but eventually, potentially other levels? Because we have this thorn that keeps coming up, that is the elevator, that was the cause of the whole Potasko Elementary task force. Well, not the only factor, but that's still going to need addressed down the road, I'm guessing.
So when we're talking the second or third floor, Dan's not talking about this potential program. He's talking about additional entities that could come in and utilize the space.
Yes.
So although I feel like the elevator's been working well, hasn't it, Katie? So although I feel like the elevator's been working well, hasn't it, Katie?
I don't know, but I think it has.
Okay.
She hasn't tried it for three years.
There's a positive answer, but it would not be students that would have a need to use the elevator. We wouldn't put ourselves in that position.
All right.
And that is a population of our students. None of our students in a placement that we're talking about have those specific needs, mobile needs.
Okay.
So even out of our students with disability population, that is so far and few between. Not to say it won't happen, it'd be a consideration, but if we did have that case, their services would just be on the first floor.
Okay.
Yep.
Just want to, and I know that you and I are on the same page. So I just, but to reiterate that, I don't want to see us go backwards with, just because we have the availability of this space, doesn't necessarily mean we want to, we want to use it, but we don't want to, we want to continue using all of the tools in the toolbox before we have to.
Absolutely. And, you know, there are some kids who, I do feel like even in the last two years, we would have kept, could have kept them in.
Very well said.
You know, and kept them involved in an extracurricular activity. You know, they could have made that transition back sooner. So I think it's going to open up doors. Yep.
And I will also just add on a side note that John brings a wealth of knowledge and experience from a variety of districts. So I think he'll be a great asset to run this program and get this school up and running.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for the personnel.
I was going to say, do you have anything else?
I do not.
All right. Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Number seven business items. We have a 7A, which is we'll need a motion to take from the table the 24, 25 school calendar amendment.
I make a motion, we take it from the table.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
We are voting on it coming off the table.
Just off the.
Off the table.
To discuss it, yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
The original motion is before the board.
So the original motion is still before the board, we can discuss that original motion now, correct?
Yeah, we probably need somebody to make a new motion to discuss it.
Now we have to motion to discuss.
All right, I make a motion to discuss it.
I'll second that. All right, Mr. Jones, now we can discuss.
Yes.
All right.
So we're back to where we were last month. I tried to provide everyone with some information regarding staff attendance as well as student attendance for a three-year trend for that Thanksgiving break. That was the main focus of the conversation. Obviously, there's some other incidental things, changing start dates and last dates for Pataskala and Cuckersville so they can move into their new buildings. So that's important. The Student Oriented Success Day, that was something that we put in the new negotiated agreement. We were doing it for K through five, that will not be K 12. So those are the big ones. I think the largest issue of why it came off last month was because you needed additional information about the Thanksgiving break, so.
Do we know how many staff were in favor of the Thanksgiving break?
I mean, I had the survey results that I shared last month with the percentage. I mean, it was a high percentage of those, of the population that took the survey. It was a high population, it wasn't the entire.
I think it was like 179 or 279.
But it was, it was a decent amount.
It was a good chunk.
Is that it? All right.
So I don't have any.
I'll make a motion that we approve 7A.
Yeah, motion's already, we already got a motion.
Oh, sorry, I thought, we're getting there.
We're getting motion happy.
I know, right?
Okay, well, there's no more discussion, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Okay. Now, business items, how about any reason to not do B through I?
Yeah, I think the rest of them.
Motion for 7B through I, so moved.
So the first policy, oh, sorry. I was just so excited to talk about policy.
I know, right?
Good way.
Sorry.
Like, I love policy. So the first, the policy for first reading is just to add the tuition-free attendance in for non-union staff, so that's a pretty simple one. The second reading, that's our classified staff vacations, again, to align with the negotiated agreement. Do you want to add anything with cameras, Rick?
Jeff, do you want anything?
Jeff, do you want to add anything briefly?
The third one is cameras for tennis courts and football stadium and session stand and fieldhouse.
Thank you. We have rehab associate's agreement. It's pretty standard. A few overnight field trip requests for the cheerleading, Virethon and our soccer team. And then Garmin and Miller's proposal for their scope of work for the restroom building. So I don't, I don't think anything has additional comments unless you have questions.
Any questions on any of them?
My question was just like, we're good with budget on the bathrooms?
Well, if we go, I mean, all we're doing now is discussing it. It's probably going to come out of the general fund, I don't know where else this time. Depends if the, where we are with our jet money, maybe there's enough there. We can use half a million of it at least, because we've been transferring half a million each year into contingency, but there may be enough from there and a little bit of general to cover it, but.
The concern is if we don't do the restrooms, that they shut us down, unfortunately.
They only give us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting close to the.
We were just pushing it a little bit, but.
Yeah, okay, that's what, we're getting close to the deadline, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Eight treasures items, motion for A through C, so moved.
Second.
Did I jump on the treasure second there? Important stuff here. So obviously, A is donations, we always appreciate those, thank you. We have one statement of purpose for the middle school student council. Last thing is a five-year forecast. This is required to be approved by the board and submitted to ODEW by May 31st. Kind of just talked about briefly, really hasn't changed, expansion-wise, hasn't changed really since the November because we really hadn't made any changes. Revenue-wise, real estate taxes is now a real number. What we receive for the year is higher than we estimated. And as you can see, $5.5 million more than we got last year, mainly because of the reappraisal that took place. Same thing with public utilities, income tax, as we stated, is down 2.6% for this year. But I still forecast for the future, still got 6% in there. I mean, looking back the last five years, we've been averaging over 6%, so it's kind of hard to. So we'll keep an eye on that, I'll see what we are in our July settlement, which is our largest settlement, to see if that, you know, if we need to adjust for the budget for next year. The other really big thing I want to talk about, school foundation. School foundation is a partnership between local and state. So when your property values increase, you get more local money, but you're going to get less state money. And, you know, for Earlworth, it's going to be to tune by a $4 million loss. Just because our valuations went from like 988, 932 and nine something average to 1.5 jumping on there and then 1.6. So, you know, we don't have a really lot of information beyond 2025. I put, really, there's so many different factors, statewide factors. I have no way of knowing what our state enrollment's going to be. What's the median income for our Ohio person? What's the median income for our school district? Those things all come in. So I've kind of pretty much kept that the same, just plugged in the property values. You know, we're going from 19.2 to 17.9 next year. That's only really the one value coming on. And then I got it going down to 15.6 in FY '26 and then keep going down again, '27. And then kind of flatlining, you know, there is at this time a guarantee. The state says you'll get what you received in 2021. That's going to help us, that's like 14.8 around there in school foundation. So I think we're going to get down to the guarantee, but I don't know what the state's going to do with the school foundation formula. It's only brought in for this BIM, they could either fully implement it next BIM or they could throw it out and do something different. I have no idea, but they've always had a guarantee in place. So hopefully, that will help us, because if we didn't have the guarantee, we'd probably still see it going down because of how much our local property value. So that's something that, that number, 17.9, could go up a little bit, it could go down. I plugged in another 125 students a year just to see what, but it's going to take about 500 for it to actually help, you know, get beyond, but that number could change. I just don't know until the state does the actual, after beginning year, where it's going to end up at. Because I just don't know where some of the numbers are, where they're at statewide. So that's really the big thing I want to talk about, school foundation. Because before, last one, we were about 18 million, pretty flat. Now, we went from 18 to 17, 15. So I wanted to bring that up as, and that's all because of our property valuation increase. So that's really all I have. I just ask you to approve the five-year forecast and authorize it to be submitted to ODEW.
Any questions? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Superintendent items.
So when I thought about some of the things I was going to talk about tonight, you know, I was kind of thinking of just the accumulation of the school year and this month of May and as my leadership team has been at many, many different events. I just thought it appropriate, I decided instead of going through numbers, I was going to share with you a little bit, a little glimpse of May and what our kids and our staff have been busy doing. So Jeff, I'm going to try to say a few things, but it's going to go kind of quick. So I don't know how fast I'll be, not that. Yep, from the beginning. Don't look at it, oh, Jeff, 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 you're killing me. All right, we're all good. No, just right there, it was playing, it was playing. Play it, quit touching things. Oh, Lord. Okay. So cabaret, if you didn't see it, that was awesome. Our bands, multiple band concerts. Theater and Egg, our students combined together to do this with our third grade students. So third grade went to the middle school to be involved in both their programs. Choir and orchestra, Jeff, stop touching things. Now you get to really, empty bowls, $1,400 for Lakin County leads. That was a super awesome event. Our literacy, salt kids or high school kids reading, vocab parade, science, baby chicks, WISKS kids going to see the high school hydroponics. Okay, now pause it. Okay, so I wanted to show you, these are our third grade performances and you have to watch this quick video. They're singing Grandma's Pretty Good Chicken Pot Pot. That's one of our third grade teachers, Mr. Nelson, with his class. All right, you can, okay, go ahead and play again. So all our third grades perform, well, all our elementaries, taiko drumming. We had multiple performances of that, which is super awesome. A running club at a couple of our elementaries, something new this year. And of course, our amazing arts festival, you can't even capture that in one slide. It was fantastic. Battle of the Books, Ashley June did a fantastic job with this. It was a super great event. Our academic awards, which was awesome this year, kudos to Tara Ram, our third grade spelling bee. Our first winner from Pataskala that I can remember, so that was awesome. Okay, go ahead and pause this, Jeff. All right, so we have, before you play the video, we had our first ever culture fair at the middle school, combined with the art teachers and our EL teachers. And I just want to show you a quick little, a two-minute video. This is, it was fantastic. That's great. So that was an extremely well-attended event where people were able to, watch Granny again, see all the different cultures and they had tons of food. It was pretty incredible. So next year, I encourage you to go. Here goes a setup for graduation for the class of 2024. And to finish it off, kindergarten screening, here comes the class of 2037.
Oh, my goodness.
And that has been the month of May. Think of all those amazing kids and all behind all those kids are all the teachers who have, are probably very tired from the month of May. Well, it was Ross Music, who I think has worked every night. I've seen him a lot as well, so, and that is all I have this evening.
Wonderful, thanks. Motion for adjournment, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. We are adjourned at 7:09 PM.